Called to order this meeting of the design review board for the city of. Um, would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
President of the United States of America.
Before we start the business of the meeting, there's always a call to the community for anyone who wishes to speak to our board on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Are there any requests to speak on a non-agenda item?
Chair, there are no requests to speak this evening.
Okay, thank you. Move forward. Approval of the minute. And which, say which minutes? Oh, the February six.
I'm going to motion to approve as posted second.
If it was motion a second, I'll favor say aye. Three ayes, all abstained. And. Item B, approval of new pergolas. Discussion of possible action approved to new pergolas within the Hacienda del Rey community at one two nine one seven West Las Cruces. And of the um. The city staff must serve. In the presentation, who's here for that project? And then if you would like to um. Add any additional information, you can give your name and speak after he's finished.
Actually, it has me as the applicant, actually, the applicant, so. Hawkeye landscaping.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, joining us, good evening, Randy Proch, your planning director. This is item B, which we've, is approval of new pergolas. The applicant, to Michael's point, is Hawkeye Landscaping, being represented by Michael this evening. It's within the Hacienda del Rey community at one twenty-nine one seven West Las Cruces. And it's a request to build two new pergolas within the residential community there. The zoning of this property is multifamily high with a planned development overlay. It is the only property we have in the city that has this zoning district designation. And on top of it has the PD overlay. The request is two new pergolas, one is approximately two hundred and twenty-five square feet, the other is one hundred and twenty-one square feet. And one of which is replacing an existing sale panel shade structure that's on the property, and then one is a new installation. Quick depiction, as far as where this is located, Hacienda del Rey community is right behind Albertson's. At the northeast corner of Indian School and Dyser, if you're familiar. The current existing one is here, right in the center, where the mouse is hovering. That sale panel is being removed in favor of this improved structure. The second location is down here and really serves as a secondary location for the residents. There's a quick depiction of just the anticipated construction of it. It's in Adobe color, and I have an example of that Adobe color here on the next page. As far as the expectation of what it could look like and is planned to be being built there in the center of the courtyards. As far as our analysis goes, these proposed pergolas are fully screened from all sides. They're located in the middle of the property. It meets all the intents of section thirty-nine of our zoning code, which is the design standards section. And to date, we have not received any public comments on this proposal. So we would recommend to move to approve the proposed pergolas. This is case PZ twenty-five oh four. Located at Hacienda del Rey, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant this evening and stipulations one and two. Which are as follows, a building permit issued by the city will be required for any, before any new construction is to occur. And two, this is on the books already, but this is something we'd like to reiterate from time to time. A minimum of distance of ten feet is required from the proposed pergolas to any existing structures. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. And Michael is here representing Hawkeye Landscaping as well.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions for either the staff or the applicant? Christian, okay. No questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the um. Pergolas within the Hacienda del Rey community at twelve nine one seven West Las Cruces. Subject to the recommendations of the city.
Do we have a motion a second? Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
So Travis. Yeah, I'll talk to you about it tomorrow.
Next item is approval of new front yard walls. Discussion of possible action to approve proposed front walls located at four oh two East Fairway Drive. Um, is the applicant here on that?
Chair, this is a unique situation. The applicant has not arrived this evening, but the owner of the property is actually here on the dais, uh, so.
Okay, so you're. Okay.
So uh. Board member Commissioner Derry will be recusing himself for this item, but he is available to answer any questions as the owner of the property. Somewhat unique situation, we actually had this happen before with the Thomas project.
Happened to me too.
So as much as this is a request to install new front yard walls at the address of four oh two East Fairway Drive. The zoning of the property is R one fifteen, and the request this evening would add new walls within the front yard to create a new courtyard space. Here's a quick depiction, what is highlighted in the brick red color, you'd say, is the new. Courtyard area, I don't think I can use that as a verb, but I'm gonna go with it. Within the front yard, you'll notice it's a three-foot wall. Our code does have allowances to increase that height as you go behind the front plane of the house. So you'll see that four to five-foot wall that is increasing in staggered and stair-stepping height towards the backyard. Here's a quick rendering of the after. On the next slide, I have the before. So you'll notice it's curvilinear in design, and you know, it's very similar to what we expect here in Litchfield Park as far as, you know, white sand finish stucco. And you'll note again that stair stepping as it goes behind the front plate. And then these, a picture provided by the applicant this evening as far as. What is currently the situation, and again, what will be essentially enhanced within that front yard. And here's the other side. So as far as our analysis goes. As mentioned, this falls under two sections this time, section thirty-nine for design requirements, which this is following. And section thirty regarding the wall requirements, which outlines the max height of three feet. Until you get behind the front plane of the house, when you can increase in height. So both of those sections that define this proposal are being met. And to date, we have not received any public comments on this proposal. So our recommendation is to move to approve the proposed walls, this case PZ twenty-five ten. Located at four oh two East Fairway Drive, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and stipulation one. As stated, a building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. And once again, as I mentioned, the applicant is not available this evening, but the owner of the property is available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions for staff?
I, I have a question, I guess. Um, I, I guess I thought that there was like a provision that. Walls under three feet could be administratively approved, so was there, I just was curious, like, is there a particular reason that you? Thought like, that it might be questionable, or?
Sure, so Chair, thank you. I'll have to go back and check the administration section as far as what the zoning administrator can do as far as minor design. Review board approvals, I don't recall that sticking out in my head by any means. And it does have the increasing height in the back, it does meet, still meets the requirements stated. But I, maybe that was a faux pas on my part by missing that opportunity.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't like something that I was missing, or that, it seems quite standard to me. Okay.
Okay.
No questions, if someone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the proposed walls. Easy to follow, ten at four oh two East Fairway, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and stipulation one. Which is the building permit issued by the city will be required before reconstruction is to occur.
A motion? A second? Motion a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Chair, I believe we have one abstaining.
One abstaining, yeah. Okay, and the next is approval of a mixed-use downtown building. Discussion possible action to recommend approval of a three-story mixed-use building and one-story ice cream shop located on lot. One and Lot Two of Luchel Square, northwest corner of La Loma Avenue and Village Parkway. Uh. That's right, on Mike's head. So if you want to, go ahead with your presentation.
Chair, thank you, we are back once again, this is a bit of deja vu for most, we saw the preliminary designs at our February meeting between myself. Mike, the architect, Tim, who is, who you can't see, but he's on Zoom, and he can unmute during the questions portion, if you have any questions for the architect this evening. We've now worked through feedback presented at the designer review board, feedback at city council. And now this, the, these are essentially the final conceptual, since this is designer review package, this is not. The construction set documents, but this is what is planned to be tied to the development agreement, tied to the sale of the land. Moving forward here in Litchfield Square. So as mentioned, Tim is on Zoom, Micro Delphi depending owner is here in the audience with us. The address is three fifty West Village Parkway. There's no building there today, so the address doesn't really exist yet. It's at the northwest corner of La Loma and Village, I have a context exhibit on the next slide I will show you. And the uh. The process this evening is to recommend approval to city council. Anything within the city center zoning district or within agritourism, the designer review board acts as a recommending body. City council is the one that ultimately approves it. Because of that as well, uh. You know, council member Brenner Watson is here to observe, however, will be abstaining from any conversation as this will be coming before her on March nineteenth. Moving forward. The request is a three-story mixed-use building, retail office, restaurants, including a rooftop patio, freestanding ice cream building. This is the finalized design, as mentioned, for recommendation by this board and decision by city council. This is a conversation that came up last time, I apologize for the small text, I'll be happy to state out loud. There was a question as far as the adjacency to homes on Lushana, which is directly north of the proposal. The parcels one and two are highlighted in red, they're the almost trapezoidal shape here at the bottom. The blue line is from the existing backyard wall to the lot line, it's the distance of two hundred and fourteen feet. From the back wall of the house to the wall of the building is a distance of three hundred and forty-two feet. So one of the conversations that occurred last month as far as how close is it? And we feel as though it does meet the intent of what we've been striving to do since nineteen ninety-five. When we hired ASU to look at a downtown master plan, and we are now executing said plan. I have a little bit of a before and after, so on the left is what you saw last month. You'll note it had the wraparound parking along the west side of the building that has now been shifted. Per direction we've received in conversations at hand, so now the building is more central on the right side image. That really uh. Fully opakes any parking from the adjacent roadways. That also gave an opportunity to increase the outdoor dining and outdoor seating areas on the east side. You always think about that western sun, it's unbearable, so we put the seating on the east side of the building. The east side of the building is also where the highest point of the third story is, so we do feel as though there will be significant shading in the afternoon along here. It also gave a chance for the ice cream shop, it's not depicted on this image, I have it on the next one. As far as the size of that and the amount of business it will receive gives them a chance to walk down. Excuse me, let's look at the new image. Gives them an opportunity to walk down and utilize that public plaza space. The other thing you'll note on this image, and I have it in more detail on the next slide, is this is showing a fourth leg of the intersection. We do feel as though there's a possible future opportunity to connect the parking garage here at this intersection. And just to show that in more detail, looking at just the site plan itself. Again, you'll note that increased outdoor plaza space here on the east side. There's a bit here on the west side, maybe, you know, for the morning coffee, this would be the nice side as far as, you know, blocking the eastern sun in the morning, western sun in the afternoon. What has also changed here is. My last version, last month had all this in red lines, now Tim has thankfully cleaned this up on my behalf. To show the adjacent roadways as far as how they all tie in together. The future fourth leg, here's the parking garage. And something we've really worked a lot with Mike here in the audience about as far as, we think there's a chance to tie in the pathway system. We want to encourage people to leave the pathway system, you know, going to the red course. Come over here, have parking available for that ice cream shop. Also gives us an opportunity to address the growing need for public works. If you've been over there on the pathway system along the red course, you'll note there's a meter. Free standing in the middle of the dirt, we're embarrassed by it, here's an opportunity for us to close it in. Add a couple of mowers, some equipment, because we do have a crew that maintains Litchfield Square. And this is a opportunity to work with Mike through the development agreement to. Find a solution that fits both during a once-over construction instead of twice-over construction. Depictions, I have the flat images, and then I have the three-dimensional images on the next slide. You'll note, we've worked extensively on the befores and afters, not only from last month, but months prior as far as how we got to the point we are today. Or board member Dudley had brought up the idea that stack stone may not be the appropriate. Texture finish and materials here within the square, within that Santa Barbara style, so those were removed since last month. You'll note, this is very much four-sided building with four-sided architecture, the main entry is here on the east side. This is the two-story foyer, you could say, with external stairwells that are architecturally embellished and integrated within the building itself. That third story also has the outdoor space here on the west side. You know, when the sun goes down behind the white tanks, this will be nice, I don't know about four in the afternoon, depends on the time of year, but. We want to maximize the amount of people and events in life that we could fit in this building. Here even on the north side of the building, the parking side, the hidden side, you could say, there is no. Loss of architectural features, embellishments, you'll note that the storefronts extend to the back of house, you don't, you won't see, you know, the metal. Man doors with the Shamrock Farms crates out back and the dishwasher taking a break. It is intended to be fully utilized and fully loved on all four sides. Here it is again, three-dimensionally, you are looking northwest, as it were, you'll note the outdoor plaza for the seating. The stairwells, all the storefronts signage, the second floor remotes, and a third-story. Outdoor seating and dining. Here it is from Litchfield Road, as you're going around the roundabout, you'll note those Litchfield Square signs are there today. I'll have to ask Tim offline if he rendered those and rebuilt those to match the existing, which is remarkable, quite frankly. The one thing that did change from before and after is there is no longer a connecting element. From the building itself to this tower element, those have now been separated. Which only just creates more plaza space between the two. Here it is from the back, as if you were sitting in cachet on one of the outdoor porches, looking down and across Litchfield Road. Again, there's details on all four sides, the main parking field, a connecting sidewalk for all of the parking field. You'll note, hidden here in the back is our public works yard, and then standing freely is the ice cream shop with the great sightlines over to the playground space. Lastly, once more, just the same. Looking northwest view, but just from a higher plane, so you can see how that outdoor plaza space would be coming out. So as far as analysis goes, you know, again, this is the second time we've brought this before you, and certainly every time we have, it's just improved and gotten better. And so as far as section twenty-seven C, the city center zoning district. It checks every box, and we're very excited to see this move forward, hopefully to construction as soon as possible, and get going vertically. Now, as far as the recommendation goes, you'll note, last time we were at eleven, we're down to eight stipulations. Just for the benefit of all, when anyone would like to make a recommendation. It is just the upper text, I don't need all eight read out, read out for you, I'd be happy to do it on your behalf this evening, just so we're all on the same page. So one is the same as our previous two conversations about regarding the building permit. Two, all off-site improvements should be completed in accordance with the development agreement. The development agreement is going to outline a lot of the things that have not yet been completed. It's not part of our conversations this evening, however, it is working tandemly with this effort. And what I mean by that is the shifting of the roadway, all that sort of stuff. Although it's shown conceptually here, really has to get nailed down in that sort of contractual document to make sense of it. Three, three has been modified since the last time we spoke. Previously, it stated a uh. Third-floor outdoor space, this has now been reduced to only say patio space, there was concern that. We don't want to box ourselves in by only having the patio space on top of the second floor on the third story. We wanted to give a little bit more of a wiggle room to have that somewhere onsite, maybe on the east side there, it was a request to enclose that space. Where this is all heading in number three is just to say, we're looking for a minimum size of thirty thousand square feet, we want to make sure that we. Get the density, intensity, the amount of building mass that we can on each of these sites. Four, isn't anything new or different from our zoning code, but we would like to reiterate this, as far as any sort of rooftop lighting that was shown on those depictions. Does need to be fully shielded, meaning no exposed bulbs, no exposed glass that shows the source, it needs to be shielded and downcast. Five, request for alternative design, the Goodyear Fire Department is our fire plans reviewer, there is only one way in, one way out of this site, there is an allowance to. Receive a support for alternative design, we do need to see that before construction is to commence. Six, because of our nature within Litchfield Square, all of these projects only receive designer review first looks, they do not have full site plan packages. Meaning there hasn't been any preliminary engineering done yet. We have done as much as we can as far as getting those sites graded and ready to go. However, the applicant is still required to do these sub-eight. List of engineering requirements, again, during construction plans. Seven, building and civils can be reviewed together as far as horizontal construction and vertical construction, but cannot be released until Goodyear Fire and Liberty Utilities, our partners have signed on off. These uh. Plans as well. Eight, signage is not reviewed as part of this application, so any depictions you show, you're not approving that as part of this supplemental, you're just seeing those as far as how that would look and feel. So once more, the recommendation is the same as it is on the previous slide here at the top. I've just reiterated here at the bottom, just for your ease. Our requests were used to recommend approval of the city council for the proposed mixed-use downtown building. Excuse me, that's PZ twenty-five dash oh one, located at the northwest corner of La Loma Avenue and Village Parkway. Subject to exhibits provided by the applicant, stipulations one through eight, and once more, Tim is working through the flu, but I see he is up and awake on Zoom call and happy to answer any questions. Mike is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions for staff or the applicant architect or owner?
I guess I, I do have something on my mind that I, I don't know if it's a question or not, but um, so. You talked about the square, square feet, again, square footage. So the city is satisfied then that like, that, happy with the kind of allotment of the thirty thousand square feet that. It's happening, I'm concerned a little bit still, I think, I'm worried that that patio on the top is gonna be like, just kind of unlivable most of the, and unusable most of the year. Because it's on the west side and it's not covered. So, I, like, is this? Is it meeting the intent of what you are hoping for, because I'm worried that square footage isn't really usable, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Chair, board member Dudley, so this conversation has been had exhaustively. I think it's the most fair way to say that with the applicant, with the architect. With a number of internal stakeholders that have had similar questions and concerns. So the thirty thousand was the absolute minimum. To achieve what we were trying to achieve. You know, we don't want to deter applicants that feel as though they've found the sweet spot for success for moving these kinds of projects forward. But certainly, we look to create parking minimums or parking deficiencies, quite frankly. So as part of this evolution of plans, you'll note a loss of parking, and that was intentional. We intend to create deficiencies, address through the development agreements, and address through the future garage. We don't want to dedicate any more land than we have to, to surface parking, so. I think that's a long way to answer the question, but yes, we are in support of the thirty thousand square feet.
Very good question, if concerning about the, if the density, can that patio area be engineered so that it could support an addition? An additional square, you know, enclosed square footage, should that be wanted, needed in the future? Would be smart to engineer that in? So that would be an easy add-on?
Well, we could, we could actually split the enclosed third floor and enclose the west side.
Mike?
Excuse me, we could actually split the enclosed square footage on the third floor. And move some of it to the west side and leave the open patio in the middle. So, you know, the, the building on, that we would move to the west side would shade the one in the middle. You know, or we could probably submit something to the city to where we could put up some sort of shades, you know, whether it's trellises or, you know. We just thought that, yeah, it is unbearable in August, in June, in July, but. The rest of the year to be sitting out there and watching the sunset, that's gonna be priceless. Yeah, so you're gonna, you're gonna give a few months to gain a few months, you know, so. And in August and July, you know, there's really not very many people out anyways, so, but.
I guess I, I also was concerned about the wind, did you think about, I mean, what? What did you think about the wind, because it, a lot of times will come from the southwest, so. That patio area is gonna get a lot of wind probably as well.
Well, that would block some of the wind also if we split, you know, but it'll change the elevation completely.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's gonna. Be a redo on, because it looks very balanced right now.
And then it depends on, you know, the tenants that we get, you know, and if, if the city's gonna allow umbrellas up there or not, you know, it all depends. You know, at this point, we don't have any tenants, we don't even want to discuss with tenants until we go vertical, because then it's just a million and one questions, you know. So. We're just basically building floor space for, yes.
Your spec building.
Yes, back building, yeah, so. But we're trying to meet all the recommendations that the city is requiring.
So if I heard correctly, you were talking on the third floor.
Yeah, the patio is.
Structurally. Your main structure, make it strong enough that you could actually make an enclosed third floor.
You could, um, at that point, and I mentioned to, I mentioned to Randy. If and when they build a parking structure, then we'll have room for another building, you know what I mean? But as right now, we need all the parking that's, that's shown, you know. So if the city puts up the parking structure in the next three years, then we can submit plans to add another building. You know, which would be more square footage. At this point, if we added more square footage, we're not gonna have enough parking. The tenants aren't gonna wanna rent, because they're not gonna have enough parking for, you know.
If they're not gonna want.
They're not gonna wanna walk from the other side of the park to that corner, you know, so.
Gulf current trouble.
Yes, yeah. That's it?
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Would someone like to? Is there a comment?
I, you know, the architect, not everything Mike had mentioned and noted in the comments that he did in fact recreate the Litchfield Square sign as closely as he could.
Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Recommend, we should recommend approval to the city council for the proposed mixed-use downtown building, PZ twenty-five oh one. Located in northwest corner of La Loma Avenue and Village Parkway, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and stipulations one through eight.
Okay, motion?
I'll second that.
Motion a second? Motion second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And when I'm saying.
Like, so, moving on, staff report on current events.
Chair, thank you. Most exciting news. We had a very, very small ribbon cutting, but everything is done. Masters, everything is done in Litchfield Square. If you were driving out today, you may have seen our construction crews backed out. There's a few more things left to discover as we've now lived it a little bit more to know. Wasn't there supposed to be a bolt there or I think a deadlock is missing on this door and things of that nature that we're addressing as far as just last little bit. So we're very excited that it's being widely used already. Just for, you know, this presentation, I would ask, we've had a little bit of. Learning curve with golf carts. Golf carts are not permitted on the paver pathways or the sidewalks within the square. That's why we do have golf cart stalls and within the, the railways in order to keep the golf carts in this sense off of those sidewalks. There are signs that are posted everywhere. It's just a new experience for those opportunities.
Very used to driving on the sidewalks all over town.
That's correct. When we do have such a nexus of activity and the square is done, we don't feel as though it will be safe any longer. To have that sort of motorized travel within these pedestrian paths. So that's the biggest bit of news. I look forward to seeing all of you at State of the City next Wednesday night.
Question about how the event go on the weekend. Other than the wind blowing really hard, because I drove around and looked at parking people. And it looked like it was working out pretty good, but there was a lot of cars out there.
Or remember, Derry, I'm always hesitant to have a conversation during this item because it's not agendized as far as the topics being discussed. So if it's okay with you, let's chat after this meeting has concluded.
Okay. Any board members have any report on current events?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. There's no other comments. With your adjournment.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.